Next week. Basically, that's what it is. Yeah. So they sell. You probably had it for a long time.
See, I have to.
But I mean, is it a priority or no?
No, that's probably true.
Okay, so it would be that to get this issue. Current man related to the last thing. I don't keep it, but I expect to spread forward. Okay. So seven, it's the third, the last seven, third. They did for their. Oh, really?
She said they acted as a professional. She's the largest student at like a national.
Was it a national address? Where? You know, I have a funny. You must have. We're searching that. It wasn't possible.
She's like, so I'm kind of funding me up there on the one year anniversary. She's like, oh, yeah. I said, right, well. Like, sure, we'll. Not that it's not personal.
Oh, yeah. In the role, it's actually.
All right. All right, so we're going to get started. We will start with, oh, I was gonna ask, where's the block? Can we?
Oh, sorry, we did.
We have the carpets cleaned.
We did for the cleaners. Oh, yeah, that's great. We're gonna need it from Mr. Brennan.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. So as you come up with it there, Dave, we'll get everything pledged.
Got it? Actually, I have to pay you to present the color.
Yeah.
That comes under duties. Probably duties as a side.
That's what you go.
Yeah.
Yep. There, you got it for the boys.
That looked a lot wrong to me.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Then we'll move to roll call.
Okay, Mayor Benny.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
All right. I'm just gonna note before we approve the agenda, all the agenda items are listed under new business, Western Meadows addition, I'll move that up to right after application agreements and hearings. So I don't know that we need to change on there, but just moving that for the record. So. Under that, we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So we. Second.
Discussion. Call a favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from July 7, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 7, 7, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Full vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or standing?
Standing.
Standing for my end. I'll move on to bills, submit it.
Make motion to approve. Second. Discussion. Is that that trip to go get your dump trucks, that was a two day deal?
They left, yeah, basically, in the afternoon, one day, stayed over, and, yeah, then came back the next day. They didn't want to push it all in one day. It's, it was way north, was the same in the town.
How about their meat half what? Millmang.
No, no, we wanted them to meet halfway and they wouldn't do it, so we had to go all the way there, so, yeah. It was up the northern Minnesota, so it was, and they didn't want to push them real hard, not knowing.
Yeah, well, last night, we were gonna try to give them meat halfway.
Yeah, we were trying to, but we suggested that, but they said no.
And they took county roads on the way to take county roads on the way back, so they wouldn't push them interstate.
Right, yeah.
I see a payment for seed for the sports complex, the Millmore seed, what's that about?
I think just doing a little overseeding, I mean, we didn't reseed the whole thing, but every year, we kind of try to overseed it a little bit, just like we fertilize it.
Not included in our previous contract.
Sidewalk project that they did out there.
Oh, okay, okay, just curious, I, it just, it just got my attention when I seen it. Because we've had so much good luck with seed out there.
Any other discussion? Motion second? Full. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
I'm on it.
Yeah.
All right, we got a section here for public comments, any public input? I mean, not a Jedi. Come on up, make sure you state your name and an address.
Oh, no problem, my name is Melissa Voss, 906 Northwestern Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota. Mayor Council, my name is Melissa Voss, but I'm the new editor here at the Ahaha Messenger, Satan in Hartford, and I'd just like to publicly introduce myself to you, because I will be showing my face around the town plenty of times, and I just wanted to know that there's this random girl with a camera, that I'm here for you. I hope you can know that I'm used as a public resource for you and the members of the Hartford and surrounding communities, and I just wanted to formally introduce myself, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Excellent. All right, under the visitor's section, Damian couldn't be here tonight, but we've got six children at home, so he couldn't be here, so we're gonna move down to application agreements and hearings. And we've got the first reading for 690, which is your first pet in the park.
Yeah, so at our last council meeting, especially for those not present, we discussed our ordinance about pets in the park. And basically, right now, all it says is that pets are prohibited in the park. It doesn't define what the park is, you know, is that just the playground area, is it the shelter area, the bike trail, sports complex, or whatever? It's pretty general, and probably all of you have noticed, it's not too many people pay attention to it either. So we kind of discussed it a little bit at our last meeting. It makes sense to allow pets on the bike trails, people walk with their pets all the time, they take them to the sporting events, you know, as spectators, but we thought, from what I took out of the last meeting, to the council really kind of wanted me to draft an ordinance that would just keep them out of the immediate playground area where the kids are playing, because they're running around there, and off like the field, the ball diamonds and the soccer fields, not the spectate section, but those. And so that's what this ordinance is basically stating, that they just need to stay out of the immediate playground area, off the ball of diamonds, and off the soccer fields.
Motion to approve ordinance 690 as presented. Second.
Discussion. What's the plan yet? Full vote? Tom?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
One more second. All right, the next item we have up is policy 2020-1, which has to do with stormwater runoff. So believe that, Teresa worked on this, and my councilman Monahan, it's been put on this after visiting lots, lots of property.
Yeah, Mark Monahan suggested maybe, right now, we don't really have a policy that addresses what we do for stormwater runoff. I mean, we have a procedure we kind of follow, you know, if we get a complaint about it, we always go out and take a look at it, depending what kind of runoff it is, whether it's on city property, or whether it's private property, and go for there. But we don't have, we have not adopted a policy which basically states that. So this policy, I wrote it to basically, maybe what we are doing now, it doesn't change it, but basically, it defines what stormwater runoff, and that's, you know, basically, you know, any rain or storm event we have that doesn't seep into the ground, you know, it's runoff from rooftops, or, you know, over the ground. It talks about public drainage areas, and so those would be the ones that the city owns and controls. And obviously, it states in there, you know, anything that's city owned or controlled, we take care of. I mean, it's our responsibility as a public, and we also take care of that stormwater system that we have under the street, so that's our responsibility, it says we'll take care of that. We have several private drainage areas in town, and that it, those are on private properties, though, so, you know, unless we have easements on them, I mean, we can't go on to them, it's on private property, we expect that property owner to take care of their property. But if it's a drainage easement, it does allow the city to go in, if there is an issue that we need to address, we can do it. But it ultimately, it's on private property, and it's that private property owner's responsibility to take care of it. The city doesn't own that property. But then, and then it talks about stormwater runoff between two private properties, and this ultimately says, you know, these are two parcels of private property, it's between those two private property owners. It's not the city's responsibility, it's them, there is, I'm talking maybe going into this more, but there are, you know, laws out there that basically said if you are creating a nuisance onto somebody where you're directly, you know, causing that runoff to go on that property, and you're changing the natural flow of that water, you're blocking it, redirecting it, you know, that's that private property owner's responsibility to correct. If it's the natural flow of the water, it's the natural flow of the water, though. So, and then the last section, basically just says, like I said, what exactly we do now, you know, if there is concern about stormwater runoff, you know, they need to report it, you know, make us aware of it, report it to City Hall. I send Public Works employee, Juju Craig, out there to take a look at it, to see what exactly the issue is going on. If the issue involves public property, we'll address that, we'll come up with a plan of how it needs to be corrected or fixed. If it involves private property, once again, it's that private property owner's responsibility to take care of that. The city can assist, or trying to come up with a plan, you know, to work with those property owners, but it's ultimately their responsibility, it's not the city's responsibility to correct. So, all issues between private property owners is a civil matter, so that's exactly what we're doing now, that's what this policy is reflecting. You know, it's for you guys to discuss and see if you want to do any changes.
Do you initiate discussion, otherwise I can look for Tom's opinion on a piece of the year. Tom, could you speak a little bit to the nuisance piece of it that Teresa referenced?
Sure, yeah.
About this idea, the piece you want to listen to the most, if it's, if it's a nuisance, or some of those kind of things?
So if someone's altering or draining their water out of the joint property or neighboring property, it's considered a private nuisance, because it doesn't affect the public as much, but that between the landowners, they would be prohibited from doing that. And as Teresa said, you know, if it's the natural flow of the water, that's one thing, if they're altering it, taking the gutters and extending them to the edge of their property, and dumping it all into the neighboring yard, it is a civil matter, I mean, as she said, the city can go try and referee the fight, but ultimately, that's, it's kind of like hedges between properties, those are, whether they're too tall or too short, or something that has to be done between property owners. So, private property owner would have potential recourse against their neighbor if they were putting additional water besides what's naturally flowing.
And just for my own knowledge, but also just the crowd here too, like, how would, if someone feels like somebody is putting a nuisance on their property, what would their first steps be?
I'd probably have to give them some sort of written notice to correct it, just as you would a public nuisance, notify them that they're potentially causing damage to their property, and ask them to crack that within a reasonable time, if it's not directed, then they may have to bring a civil action to get that resolved.
Okay.
Wait, I have a question. Bud? No, it's somebody draining.
Come on up, come up here a minute, I'll just have you come up, so we can.
Just wanted to ask, I just wanted to ask him a question. My name is Bud Johnson, I live, want to buy an overtake car.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Go right ahead.
Move, move down, huh? No. Somebody's draining water on your land, would you call that a nuisance then?
Well, it could be under state law defined as a nuisance, if it's causing, you know, they're flooding out your property, then, I mean, it's potentially.
With that city, would they go along with a nuisance?
Well, but it's a private nuisance, not a public nuisance, that's the problem, there's a distinction.
I said you ain't got nothing to do with that nuisance.
Right, a dangerous building is a public nuisance, because it could, someone could be harmed by it if a child got into it, or it could be harbored for rodents, those sorts of things. But your situation, I think, is really a neighbor versus neighbor dispute. He's taking his water and putting it onto your property, there's really not much for the city to do to correct that.
He plugged up his north south east corner on his house, and it's all draining way back on the lawn. If he had that open, would be no problem.
Again, the issue is it's between neighbors, unfortunately, the city can't get into those types of disputes.
So Bud, I think that, I think what council is saying too, is that the best thing for you to do to proceed in this case is to, is to write out what the nuisance is, state those things in there that they're, that he's doing, and, and submit that letter to that neighbor to say, here's what I believe is a nuisance on my property, and if it's not rectified, I'm going to seek civil action.
Okay, city can't do that.
Yeah, we can't do that.
You can't write that later.
Sorry. Thank you both. All right, any other comment or discussion on policy 2020-1?
Make motion to approve policy 2020-1 as presented.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion? All right, full vote? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
I'm on it.
Yeah.
All right, we have to sign them up, we're gonna review the draft for proposed updates to subdivision regulations. And, yeah, Craig, I hear you're giving up, Dave, you've been just.
I was like, Craig, I just, he's the one who worked on these changes, and kind of highlighted a few things, but there's only a few kind of, couple spots with the major changes, one is the streets we talked about, so.
Yeah, I just pointed you to the appendix, I think it was page 11, it's kind of a major revision that Craig made discussing. So there's, if you go to the page 11 of the appendix, there should be bullets 25, 26, and 27. 25, is everybody finding that? 25 is in regard to asphalt paving, if you remember, we had a request about paving the top lift the same year as the bottom lift, and it's always been the city's policy to have the developer wait a year before they pave that top lift. We've had a couple requests in the past from developers, and we've seen some communities change their policies in that regard. So I know Craig had called around to some of his maintenance counterparts in other towns, and discussed with them kind of their policies, and kind of what they have in place, what they wish they had in place type conversations. And what he kind of revolved around was, you know, most maintenance people like the idea of trying to get that settlement out over that year after utilities are in. So what we've devised here is a way to require that the developer has to wait one construction season before they, after utilities are in place, before they can pave the top lift. Okay? That way, you get that year settlement out there before that top lift goes on in place, and you can see any imperfections that might arise within that, that year. So that's kind of what, that's the idea behind it. Also, we wrote into some requirements with the building permits. I want to just clarify, so they put utilities in, a year goes by, they can do all the paving in one?
Yeah, yeah, so if, so if they put the utilities in one year, they wait one winter, they can come back that next spring, put the bottom lift in, and then put their top lift. That's, that's basically how this is structured.
Or they could to put the utilities, the bottom lift in one year, and then come back the next year with the top.
Yeah.
Just before you got that top lift, there's at least one year of settling, or goes through that freeze.
Which is the way it used to.
It used, it used to, yeah, we used to write it that the bottom, the top lift could go on for one construction season after the bottom. So even though a developer might put their utilities in, like, like in Turtle Creek's case, they had their utilities in last year, went through a winter, so we should have gotten that settlement out, and then they came and requested to bottom lift and top lift, but by, by the way the policy is written now, they'd have to wait a whole another year to build the top lift.
Is it, is one year defined in there, Mitch?
We wrote it as a construction season, so it goes over the course of a winter, so it's not necessarily one year in time, it's a one construction.
Do you think that's enough, though? Because literally, you could, you could put utilities in October, November, if you had a good, if you had a good fall.
Yeah. I guess, I, we thought.
If you have a warm spring, you can pave in March.
Yeah, and we thought it was enough, I guess, having the construction season defined in there, rather than one year.
Is five months enough time, though, even though it goes through a winter?
Yeah, usually, usually you get the bulk of your settlement through that, with that freeze thaw period, that first freeze, freeze thaw.
I'd like to see a timeframe stipulated as well, not necessarily 12 months, but one construction season or a minimum of six months, seven months, something. Because they could jam that stuff in late in the year and pave it early in the spring. That's just my opinion, that's my two cents.
If it said, Councilman Ryan, if it said something like a construction season or five months, whichever is longer?
Yeah.
Would you go along with something like that?
I don't, I don't want to see them both done in the same season.
Five months, to me, you're saying.
So even if they buried them, waited till the spring, I don't want to let them here be paved all month. And then figure that out.
You could put all the utilities in, and within five months, come back and put two lifts asphalt on top of it, turn it over to the city. I just don't think that's enough time, but, like I said, that's just my opinion.
Not to mention, you know, tonight, watching the backhoe drag down the road, it says no trucks.
Sure.
Did you see that? Right here. A backhoe drove down there.
Badmark?
Yeah. Oh, I didn't see that. Went out and turned, this leg is gonna head back south.
But anyway, but I'm getting, so if they're in there, and they're doing that construction, and that heavy backhoe's going in and out, and up and down the road, I just, that can happen after the second season, yeah, but I think it'd be a lot more scary.
Right.
When you get a better.
Yeah. It's, I'm all ears, Dave, that's what. I, I just.
I'm just one voice, I'm just.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, if we're gonna say one construction season, and that constitutes winter, because you get the right, you get the right winter, and I mean, they can be jamming utilities in late, and you get the right spring, and they can be putting two lifts asphalt on it. Right, I mean, we sure. I just want to have a minimum of a timeframe as well, so. I mean, if, we could sure put in there a minimum of six months, or eight months, whatever you guys want to do. Six or seven, but.
I don't think I'd vote for handling that lesson, Steve.
Well, this is a draft, and then I'm going from P and T with our recommendation, and then come back to us for the first and second. So our recommendation is six months, seven months, I'm not bad, it's, it's complicated.
I'd be curious to plan, because I want to talk about it too.
Do we also discuss grinded concrete, is that?
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's in our design standards, that's other.
Not in this.
Right, that's additional revisions that we're working on.
Okay, so that's Greg, you know, Kurt Cottison, filling them back in and moving them, yeah. Okay, I knew we talked about that, I just couldn't remember what that.
There's two or three things, so we're gonna revise them to the line standards.
Okay, okay. How does the council feel about?
Tony wants to talk.
Come on up.
Never known her to talk, I just.
No, we're having a side.
You weren't, you weren't talking loud enough for me to hear what you were saying, so.
I know, so, Joan Franken, 3804 North Oklahoma Avenue in Sioux Falls. So as a developer, we're listening to this conversation, and considering getting estimates for the second phase, or the last phase, final phase of the light industrial lots, out in Western Meadows. So if we were to, and that's where we're saying we'll utilities in, say we had a real nice fall, I just want to clarify that we can put one lift on, if you're talking about waiting a certain amount of time, six, seven months, we can put one lift on in the spring as soon as the asphalt.
Yeah, that's with the current policy.
Okay, good, I just didn't want to say we delay putting any asphalt out, and that we delay selling lots.
With the, with the current policy, you can put the bottom lift down in the same construction season as the utilities, and that's, that's the way the policy's always been.
Okay, just.
Good question, thank you. What's your opinion on that, Ms. Franken?
Well. Well, because we're going through something right now in another community where we've had one lift on, and are going through the process because there was construction going on, we have the shared cost of the street down in T, shared cost of Prescott Street down there with the developer on the other side, and we're going through that right now. We wish we would have put a second lift on earlier, because one, it's, it's gonna cost us a lot more, two, with the repairs that are needed for the street, they're substantial. So now we're sharing that cost plus the increase in cost, so I know there's gotta be a timeframe, but I'm just saying, we got caught the other way, where we didn't, we didn't get that second lift in when we should have. We didn't get approval from the other developer that was sharing in that, for a number of months, missed the construction season, and now we've got, we've got issues on that street in T. So the longer it sits with one lift, and if you have construction going on, like the backhoe driving down that street here, I don't know if you got two lifts on the Badmark here or not, I haven't paid attention, but that's just where you get that second lift on and get it, get it to be a good street, yes, turn it over to the city, but you just have.
But you don't have an opinion on the timeframe?
I, I don't, because it depends, and with the construction season, that depends too, and when asphalt can open up, like, it just depends. So I can see what you're asking for, is quantifying the time, yeah. So I can see what you're asking for is quantifying the time, yeah, I, I can see that. Again, I just don't want it to, um, adversely affect.
I would, I would argue the point that it would be, that it would be harmful to put both lifts on at the same time. I just, I just don't know what a, what a suitable timeframe for let the utilities sit would be.
That would be, yeah, that'd be a great question for some underground people or.
Well, you're a developer, so that's why I wanted to ask you.
I am, but we also defer to our engineers and do a lot of, um, I would say communication with. The people that know their chemistry about asphalt, um, so we do, we defer, defer our engineers. Cause we could want the second lift on while they're on, but we look at what the city requires and then we talk to our engineers too. And they go out and inspect the street, um, before we put the second lift on.
So you said this street project was down in T?
Yeah.
What's your standard?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry, so, yeah.
But you know you just got the one lift on?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so, just as the next thing, I mean.
To your point, badmar has two lifts because it was a city project.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't have the same requirements as our developers, and so there's potentially some. Conflict there, right?
Okay.
So if we can standardize a bit. But we're all the other responsible for it anyway.
True.
So.
And Mitch, I would think that. I, I agree with Mark that six months is probably a fair time, but again, back to this. Good season, bad season, so we have an early spring, they get in there in. March and bang in the utilities, and they come back in October and put the second lift, we really haven't went through a freeze thaw. So we're gonna have to really specify not just six months.
I'd be completely comfortable putting in a minimum of about a month of this, six months.
Months, but.
No, what?
But I'm saying that you wouldn't get through a freeze thaw, they could technically do this in one year.
Well, what, what I was getting at was. One construction season, i.e. winter. And at least six months.
Okay, okay, but you know what I'm saying?
Yep, the, the way it's worded, my interpretation is install one construction season after, after.
So that's, okay, so what I'm, the scenario I'm laying out is somebody's not gonna read this and say. Well, I can sneak this all in one year.
Yeah, and, and for asphalt paving, you know, the plant's usually shut down around that, things get any kind of, so you're.
This is really.
Pay up much later than that, but. Um, I could sure write in a minimum as well.
I just, Craig, we talked about the roll test before, you know, is that something perhaps to help all of us feel more comfortable with the. The subsurface of the first lift is going on?
Yeah.
Is there, can we alleviate those concerns just by specifying a roll test?
Yeah, and we, we specify those, um, so we're doing a subgrade roll test, so before they put gravel down, we're having them bring in a truck and. Watching if it's rutting or whatnot.
Right.
And at the ruts, they have to dig it down and, and stabilize it. Uh, once the gravel's in place, we're requiring them to do another proof roll, um, basically before that bottom lift asphalt goes in. And then before they put the top lift down, then we do an inspection on that bottom lift and have the cutout areas that are failed or anything like that.
That, that would provide some peace of mind to me if there's those pre. Those checks, I guess, before that first lift even goes down. That's not written into this draft, but it is in our other standards, is that correct?
Yeah, that's in our, gosh, I don't know, I think it's in our technical specifications for moving through this.
So given what Councilman Ryan had mentioned, would it be, um, maybe just a good way to move forward to say. Send this to planning and zoning without comments and, and our suggestions? And come back at the next meeting with, with what they've added or changed or think about that as well? I don't know that we would need to see, if, if it's along those same lines, I don't know that we would need to see a draft again. We could probably look at least a first reading at that point.
Since this is a subdivision regulation, it will have to go through P and Z, it doesn't have to go through a public hearing process with P and Z, so. It'll probably be a month before you see it again or anything, but then, like I said, it doesn't have to be a draft, I mean, they can take your comments. Work into the document, go through their process, and then send it to you guys for approval.
Here, question. Just thinking, somebody asked me, I'm gonna just give my petition signed. In Sioux Falls, I don't know if this is a spot for it, but he said, how come Hartford doesn't have a place for. The concrete guys to dump their concrete and wash out? In Sioux Falls, he said it's required that the developers have a spot specifically for that.
They do, and then they erosion control, they'll have a area designated as a concrete washout area, um. And I don't, we haven't done any inspections to verify if they've been doing them in their forest consultations or anything. Some typically have that called out on their plans.
So it's per lot, per house?
No, a lot of times a developer will just designate an area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't do that?
It is on their erosion control plan, a lot of the erosion control plans, and why, why it's not being enforced up there, I guess, I don't know.
We, we don't have a public spot, if that's what you're asking, you know, the city doesn't provide a spot for.
Yeah, oh, public spot, no.
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 When the guy driving the truck is done, he has to wash it out, and he said, Sioux Falls, the development has a specific spot for every concrete. Go and do that, and he said, how about it?
And you're saying they do?
Yeah, they call it out on the plans usually where they have that designated area in the, in that phase of where.
So who enforces that?
Uh, you know, we've never, I guess, inspected for it, um, I don't know if Paul's looking for those or anything, but.
I hope so.
Need to sure follow up on that.
That, the street star need to have somebody who's more involved, has more time, and. Either on the code enforcement, that's what I'll have those inspections.
So you're saying we're supposed to?
You, you probably have to call out on the plan, somebody else, you're supposed, there should be something out there on all these things.
Probably is not an answer, I'm sorry, yes or no? If you told me no, you're telling me precisely, you're saying yes, okay, thank you. So he's got a question sitting down here, if he'll know where in. Matt's landing, he's supposed to go.
I'm gonna double check those plans and make sure it's.
Very.
So.
All right.
And if it's not, we'll make sure that it gets on the side.
Okay. Thank you. Now you can get back to.
Uh, I did want to dial you in, the twenty-six was the building permit, occupancy language that we added. Um, that language, right now I don't know of any language they have that talks about issuing building permits in subdivisions, you know. It's probably a good practice to, you know, withhold those until the. The curb and gutter is in place, he's kind of like Craig and I had talked about, so that's what's getting written here, and then Craig doesn't want to be in a position either where you gravel street out there. And he's having to try to plow snow on it or anything like that. Um, so that's kind of where this paragraph is coming into play. Um, so basically it reads, if the roads gravel. They won't issue a building permit for a house until the curb and gutter is in place, okay? And also in the same breath, it's talking about occupancy requests, they'll be denied to, uh, until the bottom lift asphalt is in place. Cause we don't want anybody living on those roads if they're gravel. And that, it really comes down to just making sure that he doesn't have to be out there plowing snow on gravel.
They're technically not a road either, so, yeah, we don't want them.
But, but in the course of construction, constructing in subdivisions, once that bottom lift is down, traditionally you have them taken over and, and plowing snow on.
Once the first lift is, yeah, and now when it's gravel.
Yeah, even though you have them accepted in the work, you're still plowing snow on.
Sure.
Since Joan brought up T, I'd say a north main addition to T is a mess because there's a bull bar in the middle of that street. So then the traffic is head to head on two seventy-one, then you gotta jog over, there's no signs, you gotta jog over. To your right side of Bull Bar. And so what I would hate to see us do as our developments come in is, they obviously didn't. Widen that street initially because they probably couldn't get the adjacent property owner to sign off on paying for it. So rather than, they could do a. Just a way to throw the latest. They just didn't do it, and it creates a whole nother set of problems when you start talking about just number mobile, traffic flow. All kinds of other stuff that comes to mind. How do we prevent something like that from happening if we're kind of looking at this. This, uh, subdivision regulations, is there any place we're gonna need to flag that sort of scenario out?
Uh, can, can, was it a scenario where they didn't finish the work?
So. Yeah, I'm pretty sure there was no curb and gutter there for like a block on the east side of that street. And it's head to head traffic, and it widens out Bull Bar in the middle and curb and gutter on both sides. And so technically that is one-way traffic, nothing signed.
I mean, I could, I could follow up with the transit and talk about that maybe outside the meeting or figure out. Just how we can address that whole situation.
Sure, absolutely.
That's good, excellent.
All right. Any other direction on this, what we're looking for? Teresa and Mitch, do you feel like you have enough on there, do you need any, any motions, directions on this one?
Well, I think it just depends, there's every, six months, eight months, if anyone had a big preference.
I don't.
That's how you're going to do this, I'm gonna write. I don't like to interrupt.
I've talked on two separate codes in the text.
I'm gonna write it for six months, I guess, for now, and then do, do a little routine Z with that and see what their comments are and see if that means they can tweak it.
What are your comments about?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on, we've got one item, new business we're gonna help. We've got Barker Brothers Edition, uh, amendments to their preliminary plan, so. On this, start with Bonnie or you can start with Teresa, or whoever you'd like to go.
Probably already read my report, so I guess we can start with Bonnie, she can present a request to the council and then we can. Questions in there, yeah, okay, that's fair.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Morgan of Costello, in Sioux Falls, um, seventy-four on I- itself, they're red, placed. And I am here to, um, ask for some amendments and revisions to the preliminary plans that were approved back in two thousand fourteen. Um, mainly for the light industrial lots, um, located on the Western Meadows addition, addition. And, um, back in two thousand fourteen, the preliminary plans, um, included, um, the plat of ten of the light industrial lots. Since I've sold those, um, the last two will close here in the next thirty days. And so, um, we are looking at extending Route Trail, which would complete the booth, is what I call it unofficially. But, um, it would include nine more light industrial lots in that area. And so, um, we, um, completed the construction plans, uh, preliminary construction plans last year, and there were several comments, and then the project was put on hold for a few months. And so I am here to ask for some revisions, um, to the comments that were being, um, the construction plans presented them. And as Teresa mentioned, I had outlined, I'm not sure how much information I should go through.
Like your, your email and copies of the maps that they have, obviously.
Okay, so there is four, there are basically four items, I'll just summarize them, um, the first one was to, um, eliminate the requirement to have the extension of water and sewer services. And, uh, um, the construction of a maintenance road located from where the Route Trail would be, um, to south to the interstate I ninety ditch. And, um, reasoning, um, that we're requesting that amended is that it's not really a typical case where a developer is extending the sewer and water for an adjacent landowner. In this case, it would be, um, extended to the ditch, waiting, um, for the possibility of someday, somebody would be bored underneath I ninety to pick up utilities. Um, if that was the case, we would, we would leave the, um, the actual easement between the two lots that lead to Route Trail. And so if there wasn't even enough future for a developer or owner to extend and pick up the water and sewer off of Route Trail, they would still have that. Um, capability, but we are requesting that, um, Costello, the developer, is not responsible for that extension. That was the first request. Um, second one, um, on the preliminary plans, there is an area that extends to the west and it's, um, it's a twenty-foot. Water easement, but along with that, it, um, is defined as a pedestrian easement with a hard surface. And it's our, we're asking for that, the pedestrian easement to be removed from the plans just for the fact that. In the future, if, um, there are residential lots developed on the west side of the Western Meadows addition. We don't feel that pedestrians should really have access to the industrial area just for safety reasons. We would think that they're a better place to have an easement for pedestrians to walk further to the north. Um, the third one was to eliminate Schaefer Lane that's shown on preliminary plan, and that kind of takes care of itself with the replat on the, of the, um, proposed nine lots. That there would not be a need for Schaefer Lane to extend to the west, as, um, all the lots would be, um, serviced from, directly from Route Trail. And then, um, the fourth one is, um, there's an area just to the, um, south of the existing Deer Hollow Apartments, um. That, um, includes a forty-foot landscape buffer. And this is along Route Trail, um, north of the industrial, light industrial lots that we're proposing to plat. And, um, if that forty-foot landscape buffer remains, that leaves, uh, an area of land about fifty-two feet. In width, which would not be able to be developed. And so our request is to remove the forty-foot landscape buffer. And maybe have something in our actual covenants that requires whoever purchases that property have trees on that frontage instead of a forty-foot buffer. And by, by doing that, it would make the lot about ninety-three feet wide, which we're hoping. We could have, um, somebody purchase it and put some type of either a duplex or a triplex in that area. Um, to just make it developable. So those are the four items that I had outlined, and, um, I guess are there any questions or comments on any of those?
In regards to the offer, the five shows a sixty-foot landscape buffer to the lot west of that, as well as. All the three lots to the west of that. South of Lot sixteen A.
Good.
We got Lot seventeen, Lot sixteen A, there's a sixty-foot buffer there. And Lot sixteen A. I'm just curious how, how any of that came about, for any idea?
I believe it was back in two thousand fourteen when we had proposed to do the industrial lots, that, um, they wanted a, a buffer. Um, between the existing residential lots and, um, and the proposed industrial. And so I'm glad that you wrapped that up because the lot sixteen A that's shown on the plans.
Yeah.
That lot is developed, but it has not been sold or built on yet. And so along with this, I would, um, I would, I guess, ask to replat that, um, sixty-foot landscape buffer in with sixteen A. And that way whoever purchased that lot would own that buffer part of it, so it wouldn't be an area that nobody owned in the future. Um, the lot that, um, is south of Lot sixteen A, Block five, going further to the west there. That lot has been built on, has been sold, and so, um, I would probably need to work with that existing, um. Homeowner as far as that sixty-foot that's there for that buffer. Versus having it, you know, I'm just thinking in the future that there's not gonna be anyone there maintaining that. It should be owned by somebody.
Is that where the pile of dirt is currently, or is that further south?
Um, that's further south, it's kind of right where Trojan goes, um, where Trojan ends there, and that's where the dirt pile starts.
And, and two thousand. In, in two thousand and fourteen, when these preliminary plans went, as part of the discussion, planning and zoning is the one that initiated the request for the buffer in there. And that is quite a big buffer. I don't really see it in any other plans coming in. I think their only intention was just to have some kind of buffer to kind of shield those residents from, you know, an industrial site. So this is pretty large. Mitch typically sees, I don't typically see this big a buffer.
It's, it's above and beyond your standards requirements.
Yeah.
The one thing about your, your zoning rigs do require when you have industrial abiding residential like this, there is screening requirements at those industrial, and Bonnie and I talked a little bit about that ahead of this too. But if you had actually struck the landscape buffer like that, then I would think that would take care of some of the screening requirements. But I think that needs to be kind of taken into account. If the buffer goes away, there's still the screening requirements that'll have to be probably adhered to within industrial lots. Unless there's a fair constraint.
I have a industrial lot, maybe not industrial, commercial, with no sidewalk car. And I think we assumed that no one would walk toward, when we developed certain areas. And maybe my one big concern is, I know we exempted currently what is there from having sidewalks. I think they're the first lot that went in as a sidewalk, the first development. And nobody else does. And I think what I see when those lots are being developed and construction is happening is those individuals park on the street and they walk in the street and it actually creates potentially more of a hazard than is necessary. So I, I just ask for your consideration and that, to just eliminate it because of where it's at and without potentially looking down the road and thinking how future employees may, may access that if for some reason on a bus or. We're really thinking the future here, but you know, when I see those people walk through my front yard, I get slightly irritated initially and then I realize if I have a sidewalk, I wouldn't be so irritated. So just a point to consider. I realize the standard has kind of been set with the first phase, but it's not to say that it isn't worth consideration on this phase.
I have a question about the forty foot buffer. So what forty foot buffer there's currently fifty-three foot?
With the, with the.
Is that lot, is that lot ninety-three feet?
Yes, it's ninety-three frontage, but forty foot of that right now is shown in the forty foot landscape.
So it's not buildable?
So there would only be fifty-three feet left or.
But if you, if you hit the forty back, looking north to south, the setbacks are going to be forty-five feet, aren't they? Teresa, twenty in the front, twenty-five in the back or fifteen?
Depends on how you address it.
Depends on which way face it, which way faces the root trail.
The lot twenty-seven, you could address it to the east, but the lot twenty-six, it looks like you're gonna have to address it or address it to the south.
You are, yeah.
So if you, if you turn your lot at ninety-three feet, you got forty-five foot of setbacks, you're still only dealing with forty-eight feet of buildable.
Yeah, fifty, but the setbacks, there's twenty-five front, twenty-five back.
And I'm thinking those two lots are gonna end up being one, that they're, it's gonna end up being some type of multi-family duplex and triplex. And not have two frontages. That's, that's what I, I mean, we don't know.
So you'd just address it off of Rude?
I'm sorry.
You'd, you'd address it off of Rude then?
Or you could, right, off of the north.
So your setbacks, so your setbacks work better for you?
Right, right. Maybe a lawn, any lot, you know, a deep lot.
Is that side here, Teresa's seven?
I remember having these discussions when I was on planes, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
What about the water?
No, it's twenty foot water, mean. I remember having those discussions about trying to push sewer under the interstate and this was perfect, hey, let's tie it into this development. Because we had all of there, there was nothing else on the horizon at that time. You got some other opportunities now, but that part doesn't worry me as much.
I just like to understand where it's at. So it's on Lot seven, in between seven and six?
So that's where the easement is proposed to, that there would still be a twenty foot easement left between those two lots? But our request is to not extend utilities and put a manhole in hydrant.
Yeah, okay.
So the mains are in Rude Trail, you know?
Mitch, if anything was ever developed west, we have access to, I know there's a lot of water and stuff ordered, but.
Yeah, there's, there's still.
When you go down Mickelson?
Mickelson, yeah. And there's still another western phase that they have in preliminary plan that is to be developed?
When I was looking at this in my head, I thought the main is gonna go through Lot seven somehow to the west side. That made no sense to me because if somebody built, built in there, we're gonna take water.
You know, we still, if you look at, if you look at this sheet that shows the overall plan, there is a cul-de-sac that's planned over there on the kind of the western edge. We are, they are proposing to loop that water main over that cul-de-sac through, through this easement that they laid out. That will get connected over to that side.
That answer.
The, the extension of the, that they're talking about tonight was anticipating development on the other side of the interstate. We do feel that this is where they will connect to someday for a water main connection and sewer connection. Whether that needs to be extended today or not, who knows how long that's gonna be. Our standards are written the way we always try to get the developers to extend to the outer edge of their development as much as we can. But we talked to Bonnie and John and Bowles and you know, it's, there's an expense, large expense there that doesn't really benefit them, I think is what they're trying to convey to.
So with that being said, would it be in our interest as a city to have some discussion about us helping with some of those costs of this truly? Gonna let us up, maybe help us out in the future for future developments of the interstate? Is that a conversation that you'd be willing to entertain? Having that sewer installed, but not at your cost? But at least having the discussion with the city about allowing us to put that in at the title of this development at our cost?
I guess if the city wanted to do that, it's just, you know, it could be, I mean, the easement is still gonna be there. So if you decided to do it, and you know, if there was somebody that needed it, then you could do it at that time too. I mean, I guess that would be.
We may be able to do it more economical if you have all, you know, if you've already had a crew on site mobilized. You know, it would be less expensive. It'd be a better investment on our part to do it today than it would be ten years from today. Would you be open to that conversation?
We would be open to it. I don't know if there's maintenance issues.
No, it's either that or you work with the next developer that comes along and work with them to get it across there.
They'll certainly expect us to recoup our investment at some point.
Yeah. Just not knowing how long it could sit poses some concern, you know, that we have that infrastructure there that's not getting used well, has to be maintained to some degree, you know? I'd be okay if you, if you decided not to do the extension and you come back years down the road and work with the next developer to get it across. Or potentially that developer just is willing to go and connect to it.
There was also one other item in which I talked about this earlier today that wasn't on the list, but involved Western Meadows. And I've had this conversation in the past and now I received a letter a few weeks ago from the city that, or from Stockwell that showed that there's some improvements that will be made coming up in the near future on, out in Western Meadows on the intersection of Hopewell and Rude. And we had talked to the city, I guess I discussed this a couple of different times, the possibility of the elimination of Rude extending to the north through Western Meadows that would connect to Mickelson. Basically that road, if it's extended, we have the wetlands that would, would be up the whole west side of it. So there would not be any need for access into the wetlands off of that. And then there would just be one lot that we would sell, a commercial zone lot that would be left there. And so what I'm trying to say is there wouldn't be a lot of lots that would front the extension going to the north. And that was another thing, and since this came up as far as the re, the cities going in and redoing Hopewell and. I decided to bring up that issue also since it involved Western Meadows.
So just to summarize, if you look at that main page again, green lane is on the preliminary plan is planned to connect to Mickelson Road. And now that we have Diamond Trail that came in years later after this plan, that really gave them their second access. We've been, we've had that conversation. We're okay with eliminating that connection to Mickelson Road. It's actually designed Hopewell, the intersection to eliminate that, that intersection or I guess that road going north. And so we just thought, meaning that we're talking about amendments to the preliminary plan, it'd probably be good to get it officially on books and that request as well. So that'd be probably request number five. And then I would say if we're agreeable, if the council agreeable with these, I would ask that Costello follow up with them, revise the map so we can track all these changes a little bit.
I agree with the further discussion.
Has this been to B and Z or does it do, comes to us first or doesn't go to them at all?
Well, ultimately you guys have final approval on the preliminary plan. We're asking for units to change it, yeah.
All right.
Initially it went through them to vet it, but this is a change to their.
Okay, okay, just curious.
I'll make a motion to amend the sewer that that, that, that Rude line goes south to maintain current, current easement.
I'll second that. Motion, second on the sewer. Does anybody need to hear that or have further discussion on that?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Brandon?
Yes.
Yes.
Help me explain this, the tie in Mickelson, that you want, if I'm looking at this right, this map is.
So right now Rude Lane ends at the intersection of Hopewell and Rude Lane, that there's our approach. And the city's going to be.
Re-doing that.
Redoing that intersection and removing that approach and going to the north. And so we had conversations in the past about eliminating that whole area since there's wetlands on the whole west side of it.
Rude going down.
Right.
Up to Mickelson.
Right.
Which is what, block, maybe two block?
Right. It's a long block.
Long block. Cause right now you only have one lot plotted or planted on the west, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking at this, right? You don't have any trouble with that Mitch?
I don't, you know, the reason why that was required in the past was because that was your second access into that side of the development. But then when Diamond Trail came in, that gave them that second access.
So did you mention something about when they're fixing this, you are gonna have them stop right at that?
Yeah, with, yeah, so with this project that we have Zach Rice contracted for, we're eliminating that return that goes to the north. There's gonna be a T-intersection constructed back to.
Cause it goes that way of ways right now, doesn't it, or no?
It's just, it's just the return.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I make the motion that we amended, so that section of whatever you call it, North Rude or whatever is and that no matter gets removed or whatever.
I'll second that for discussion.
So the remaining land, if that gets, when that gets developed, you just get access off Mickelson going south? If I'm looking at this right, cause it's still land?
There is, the land would be the, where that stretch of the street would be, would just be replatted to that lot. There would not be a street there.
Yeah, but there's unflatted lot, lot, unflatted land. Is that all wetlands?
Everything on the west side of it is.
Is all wet?
Right, there's probably one lot there next to the substation that would have access up to there.
Right, right.
But I think what he's wondering, in your original plan, you show all those residential lots there to the west. That would be an access off Mickelson at some point, farther to the west.
Yes, they would have the whole access underneath.
You wouldn't have two coming off Mickelson, would you have one?
Right.
Right, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Is there easement on that piece right now? For utilities, is there easement for anything on that piece?
Well, we don't need utilities in there. It hasn't, it hasn't been planted yet.
Right.
So it's just two lines up each paper is all it is right now?
That intersection's a perfect example of needing two lanes between your first and second lifts.
Yeah.
On the second lift to slip on the first lift.
Not that you guys did that. No.
That's what always comes to mind when we're talking about.
I can't respond to these. I know.
So we're talking about the extension or not to Rude or?
Yes, that's number five. It's not really on your list. That's a verbal.
Yeah.
From the first day until the last day. Right, you went from one to five, or did you?
I'm not looking at the list part, I'm just going.
That's scary.
A bow hanging fruit.
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, so we have the motion and second number five. Any other discussion? O'Hara? Fred?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Fred?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a way we can do these other three in one motion?
Or you're gonna do two or?
One is eliminate the pedestrian easement, twenty foot water loop, the other is eliminate Schaefer Lane and the other is eliminate the forty foot landscape buffer.
Number two, that big a deal for you guys?
We go back, join the whole group. So when we first, yep, yep, so when we first looked for our plans to develop this, so Travis was pointing about people walking toward the light industrial businesses. We didn't know exactly what it was, anything else. But we, we asked you to not make us put a sidewalk there because, and I'll just say, part of your experience of the crooks, light industrial development, okay, was not to promote or to encourage people or, or I'll say families with kids to walk in that area. So that's where we were coming from. Light industrial is. Light industrial is not something we want people walking around to. We, of course, hopefully your bus or your local transportation can pick somebody up and drop them off in there, and I know they'll be walking on the street, but that more than likely will be an adult walking. We just didn't want to put sidewalks in to encourage people to walk up there and walk that loop. Well, because it is, there's some trucks, there might be heavier equipment up there in that area. So I just want to bring that up in that area. That's what the initial discussion was, and our reasoning behind that one.
That would be a good way to connect the west side without going through.
Sioux Falls must have reconsidered their stance on that. As the city, if there's any building妨碍 issue up in our area, it's not required a sidewalk there.
They, they've actually had to go back and re-add some industrial parks to add sidewalks out as city projects.
Right.
So that, that mindset's changed.
So to your point, Jones, I understand that, that you forced whoever's walking up there to walk in the street and potentially, you know, expose themselves to truck traffic. That happens on Highway forty-two.
So let me ask you this, if you're going to require us to do that, then are you gonna turn around and have, or go back to harms and have them put in sidewalks then to connect our sidewalk in the light industrial? Because then, isn't that promoting, like in some of the light industrial areas of Sioux Falls, there are also commercial, I'll just say restaurants, Taco Bell, McDonald's, I'm thinking of North Cliff right now, where they're promoting walking to those restaurants, not just to the bus stop.
Right.
And so that's my question, are you gonna, are you gonna have them put in sidewalks then? So the people that need to go grab pizza over there, you could walk down the sidewalk to go get that pizza at that.
I would sure like to see, you know, they have sidewalk on the north side of their premise there, their property on Diamond Trail, they have a sidewalk.
And our tenants love to use that to walk to the coffee shops and the coffee.
I think you guys have sidewalk there in front of your, your developments. I think we as a city need to reevaluate the elimination of sidewalks. When there seems to be a bit of a push, we spend a lot of money.
Yeah, it's, you know, that corridor itself is a rural section still, so there's no defined curve and gutter, that's, you know, tends to, you know, we've, we've made that recommendation in the past, that once you rebuild that corridor with a urban section, you ensure to put sidewalks in.
It doesn't, I, I don't say that because I realize it doesn't, really, those costs don't, aren't yours for, so to speak. Right, I mean, you sell the lot, the person developing the lot has to put the sidewalk in, so. I'm, I'm not bringing it up because it's like we're trying to give something here and take something there, I just, concept of how you develop areas to promote walking and safety is just on my mind, I guess.
Yeah. If I just bought one of the lots and didn't have to put a sidewalk in, and then you told me you had to, it'd upset.
Yeah, that's, absolutely. I wouldn't say it'd be something that, to be considered moving forward, not necessarily retroactive. I motion, I motion to eliminate pedestrian easement. Because that, that actually has to go through a wetland, I mean, my, my thought is, my motion, I'm standing on motion yet, but my, my thought is that that doesn't really go anywhere, if I look at the big picture.
Yeah, the, the reason, yeah, the reason that's there is the drainage wave that goes through the development that was proposed as part of their green lane, so there is a, a plan, from what I understand, there was a, there's a bench in there and, um, I guess I have to refresh my memory, but I thought that was part of your, um...
Dedication plan?
No, like park dedication requirements.
That was when the southwest corner was also.
Yeah, and that was gonna be a park, so that's, yeah, it's kind of what it was once upon a time. There's still, there's still the drainage wave that'll have maintenance bench, maybe it'll serve as a, a racetrack someday. But I, I, I don't see if they need to, need it myself either. I think on the west side, there would be, I'd be busy to have the residential lots.
Do you have a motion?
Are you now still processing?
What's your timeframe, ladies?
Um, if we get everything approved, then we'll go ahead and update the construction plans. It's a sandwich for final approval.
So your timeframe's today, tonight, tomorrow, yesterday?
Preferably, but what we're hoping is to update the construction plans and then get everything good, so that we can possibly start to work this fall, so.
Because honestly, of the three that are left, the two that, like Travis said, is processing, is the forty-foot buffer and the sidewalk, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't know what that, I don't know what that forty-foot looks like. I, I think forty's probably too much, but I don't know whether we need to retain, I don't know, fifteen, twenty? I don't know what that looks like. Just shoot from the hip.
We still have the standard setbacks on it. And what I had suggested is instead of having a buffer in the corner plans, we have us putting in our covenants for that lot, if it's gonna be a multi-genderal lot, that whoever buys it and builds it, it requires X number trees along the.
Yeah, but the setback, the setback is still gonna be fifteen feet, fifteen foot right away.
Fifteen and twenty, is that correct? Fifteen and twenty?
For multi-genderal, I think you're going in, yeah.
So it's a fifteen or twenty?
Uh, it's thirteen on one side, twenty on one.
It's twenty, but then on the second street side, you're gonna have fifteen, yeah.
For the, for the easement?
No, it's setback, for building.
But is this, is the easement figured in that forty or not? Is there, is there a forty-foot buffer and then fifteen-foot easement? Because that's not the way I look at it, I just look at it as a forty-foot buffer.
Yeah, you're asking if the setback's on top of the forty feet?
I'm not talking about a setback, I'm talking about easement, back to curb to property line.
So easements can be within the setback area?
But what I'm saying is, because that forty-foot buffer, fifteen foot of that is right-ofway.
We have fifty-five foot or forty foot.
Is there forty foot or fifty-five foot?
Oh, for the street?
No.
For the lot.
He's asking if the setback is within the buffer, which I believe in.
Yeah, it's a forty feet, forty-foot buffer.
The landscape is from the red.
But, so that's what I'm saying, everybody, this is drawn out as forty feet, but it's really not forty feet, it's really twenty-five. Because I don't think you're gonna put a buffer in a right-ofway. Because the purpose of the right-ofway is to put snow in the right-ofway. So you can't have a forest buffer in the right-ofway. So you're really looking at twenty-five. So that's what I'm getting at. So, so take the fifteen foot off the table, because you're not gonna put anything in there. You're not gonna put a buffer in there, I think you might plant some, we have right-ofway trees, but that's not a buffer, I have two in my yard, that's not a buffer.
Like, forty feet is not in the right-ofway at all. The forty feet's not in the right-ofway, starts at the right-ofway and then forty feet.
So we're talking about fifty-five feet.
It's, uh, it starts from the right-ofway, that buffer is forty foot wide.
Okay, so you got fifteen foot of right-ofway.
Yeah.
And then forty foot of buffer.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
And what you're asking for is for it to be twenty, or less?
I am asking for just the standard setbacks.
She's asking to eliminate that.
For the eliminate the forty-foot buffer, that's what you'd want us to do.
In order to make it, so someone can build that.
The, the only point I'm trying to make is in that fifteen-foot right-ofway that is not part of the forty feet, you're not gonna have a buffer in there. You, you will not, I mean, you can plant trees in there, but it will not be a buffer.
The buffer's gonna be a building, an apartment building, a condo.
Well.
Which is north of that angle, right? That's where the apartments are basically.
Well, the buffer was, we thought was going to be like the buffers that we've seen in falls where it's the hills and the.
Trees, hedges, fence or something.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where we're saying forty feet on top of the fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Fifteen foot eas, um, what you're talking about, Mark, easement. And then forty foot, it leaves very little to build back here when we can push that forward and have the buffer become trees, evergreen trees or something. Something.
I guess, oh, oh, I'm trying to get across, Jones, is your tree buffer won't be in the right-ofway? It'll be on private property in whatever we say, whether it's ten, twenty, thirty foot, forty foot, or whether we just make it go away and make you put in a buffer, so. And whether you can get that buffer in, I don't know if you can get that buffer in ten-foot bench? Probably not?
Twenty, I would say.
Twenty feet?
Truthfully, like, the way our ordinance is written, is that block four, lot twenty-six and twenty-seven get developed before block ten and block seven? Lot ten and block seven is responsible for putting in a buffer on their property.
Well, and that's, yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at earlier, is regardless, I mean, it's, you got an industrial abutting residential and your zoning standards for an industrial lot with residential across the street, whether it was a buffer or not, has that screen.
Some buffer.
That's not screening. Yeah.
And so we should be looking at, lot ten is gonna require to have a buffer on its north side because it has to screen from the residential. Because block four, lot twenty-six and twenty-seven are all residential. There's a lot to eat here.
There is. And we've spent quite a bit of time on this topic, ready? So.
We still got three left?
Do you, I would suggest we either have motions on the remaining three or motion to table the remaining three.
What was the one, the street?
Schaefer Lane, yeah, yeah, two lanes down, the five of the rest of the west. Hey, Dr. Spine, that's not even me anymore. I'm fine.
You wanna, you wanna eat it?
No.
Because we can, we can kill her right now if you wanna eat it. We don't need that, Mitch?
We do not need that, that's what the.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to get rid of Jones' quote-unquote baby Schaefer Lane.
I'll second that one.
Alright, discussion. Hello? Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
I'm gonna make the motion to table the sidewalk and the buffer till the next day.
Number two?
And number four, right?
The motion for tableting two and four. We have a segment. Andrew Nunn?
Make a motion to approve number two, which is the pedestrian easement. Twenty-foot water easement. Or, is weird? We're leaving the twenty-foot water easement, just eliminating the pedestrian easement, correct?
That's the request.
I second that.
Alright, I have a motion, a second, let's hear that motion, yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I, I'm very.
Big motion to approve item two, which is to eliminate pedestrian easement and eliminate the water. I do not second that.
The request is to retain the water easement.
Retain the easement, but remove the water loop, which is plumbing?
That's the water main, water main that's going through there. So the request is to, you know, get rid of the pedestrian easement, but retain the water easement.
Alright, so your motion is to eliminate pedestrian easement and retain water.
I'm reading all this, when I simply said number two.
Alright, so Brandon's motion is, is, it's on number two as written. I second that.
Let's make it easy.
He's got his glasses on.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion, a second.
Those combined.
For number two as written. We need a session. Andrew Nunn, O'Hara?
Yep.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Lyle?
No.
Randall?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Alright, do we have any further motions or tables?
Motion to remove the buffer requirements, uh, as per number four. On lots twenty-six and twenty-seven, block four.
Do we need, oh, do you second?
Yep, gonna second.
Do we need to tie anything to that, to that lot ten, or no? Know that that's already in there, that's gonna answer no matter what.
That's your standard.
And nothing regarding their covenants? Leave that up to them to, as it's written?
Yeah, based on our discussion, they're, they're gonna have to be pretty specific about how they place that property, what address it is, because we've got twenty-five foot setbacks from here, seventy-foot side here, so.
Right.
A dup, a duplex on there, it's doable, it'd be an X-sized duplex, but currently it's just green space and all this is green space and we utilize this.
So a lot to join, sure. Other questions? Alright, we have a motion, a second.
A second, I missed that.
O'Hara?
Yep.
Anybody need to hear that again?
May I ask one more question?
Yeah.
You guys said earlier there was other regulations.
Yeah.
That there will be a buffer, whether you're ten, nine, or eight.
Yeah, yep.
Right, or it goes on the residential side?
Our, our zoning regulations require industrial lots, if you build on there, if you butt up, and it doesn't matter if there's a street there, if you have residential, do it, you have to have some kind of buffer in there, with the fencing hedge.
Regardless of this motion, those lots are gonna have to.
That's still gonna be required, yep, so they're gonna have to have some kind of.
An example would be when the four-plexes were built south of the steakhouse, that would be responsible for putting that buffer.
Sure.
I have a question, so, but we're just talking about lot ten, then, correct? Because that buffer would still remain across to the other ones?
All of those industrial lots, because there's residential on the other side, they have to have some kind of screening or buffer, could be a fence, could be a hedge, could be, you know, whatever the commissioning use would require.
But the landscape, there's already a landscape buffer across the street from the other ones, the sixty-foot.
But our zoning regulations are still gonna require that on the industrial lot, not the rest.
On both, on both sides of the street, you have to have a buffer, is what you're saying?
It's gonna require it on the industrial lots, on the south side of the street. That's why when we start. That's why when we started this conversation, I don't, I said, you know, that was required by PNC. It's pretty big, I don't know if you need that in there. I don't see it. It's kind of redundant.
That one double, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's kind of redundant, it is.
It's redundant.
Yep.
All right. We got a motion, a second? Maybe you hear? Hey, hello?
No.
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara? Keel?
Yes.
I think that's all that is.
Appreciate you always having me.
Yeah.
That's a little heavy, so.
Thank you.
Pull the cat through the eagle. I pull the cat through the eagle.
Just think of all the pre-meetings we've had before you got done.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, we're going to move back up to reports. And first, our agenda is.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor Sparks, hold on, welcome. Uh, kind of had a little bit of a busy month in, uh, June, I think it was a record all-time, forty-eight calls for the month, so. Kept hopping, and the way the few days, we had four calls in a day, multiple calls going on, same time, back-to-back, so. Uh, sixteen of those calls were in Hartford, so luckily June's, or July's slowing up a little bit, back to our about call a day average right now, so. So, a little more realistic. Uh, training side in June, on the EMS side, we trained on EMS, incident emergencies, apparatus safety, hygiene, and personnel safety. Uh, the fire side, we trained on hydrant pump operations, drafting pump operations, and hose deployment. One of the big things we're working on as a department, uh, really on the member retention side of things, um. Uh, seems like our calls out here, we're starting to see a little more to the extreme on the calls, uh, as you guys have probably seen the news a little bit, uh. Over the last, uh, twelve months here, so we're really working on the mental health for our members here. Right now, we're working on a four-pronged approach to that mental health, the first one is a critical incident stress debriefing. Years ago, we had a pretty, uh, active debriefing team in the region, um, as time has gone on, uh, we've lost, uh, train members of that. So we're really working on an initiative department-wide, uh, from our end to get our members trained, it's not so much going to be for us, but to really drive, uh, that debriefing team back to life in the region for not only our department, but other agencies in the area. The second part we're working on, uh, from the mental health is a chaplaincy program within the department, we have a couple individuals working on that and, uh, uh, helping to provide, well, say, the day-to-day incident, uh, private counseling, uh, in-house our members might need. The third prong we have tonight is professional counseling, through some of our, uh, insurance carriers, we have that available, uh, they'll pay for some of the counseling sessions if needed. And then the last part of it is peer counseling, uh, working with, uh, some staff in Sioux Falls Fire, getting some peer counseling programs, uh, set up. That way, if we have members, uh, dishonestly or not, they have avenues, uh, to utilize and approach, uh, if they're having issues coming off of call response, so. So that's kind of what we're working on right now. But without, but any questions?
I appreciate you making that a big part of your report tonight, Chief, because, you know, you hear some of these, these calls that you and your team have had, and that mental health piece of it, um, I don't know, it's just, it's, that's important to me, I know they, they and you and everybody, you see a lot more than, than what the rest of the city knows, so. I just appreciate that you're working on that, and if there's, if there's things we can do as a city to help with any of that, absolutely, so. Any other questions?
Got a big, some, some good stuff coming up, don't you, in August?
Uh, Public Safety Day coming up in August, I don't know the date, because I'm actually going to be gone on vacation, so I haven't been too involved with that one, but, uh, sounds like we have a lot of entities going to be taking part of it, and I know the kids, kids enjoy it, uh, we have to take some precautions with the COVID going on and some things like that, but hopefully it can be a good activity, uh, for the community, just like the Jamboree Parade was, I think that would well receive also.
Sounds good.
Good.
All right, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is your report, Mr. Inge.
Yeah. Um, I didn't have any new to update, we just have been to you, up to speed a little bit, and we just, we do a reporter meeting, just list out our projects and try to get little updates in there. Um, if you have questions at all on any of these projects, feel free to reach out, um, if you hear any complaints or anything like that, reach out to us and our staff, and you can get those addressed as soon as you can, but. Right now, our big project that's under construction is Ninth Street, so you'll see some work going on up there. Um, other than that, kind of the other thing we've been working, I brought Vandermark Avenue back onto the report just because we're dealing with some warranty items there. And so we're going to have the contractors come back and make some repairs to some of the seating that's out there and some of the, the concrete areas that, uh, they'll get those updated in the areas in place. But other than that, any, any, any special point on this, anybody has questions?
I don't. Yeah, when did the no truck sign go up?
For the Ninth Street project?
Well, yeah, I guess, is that where?
Is that on Vandermark?
It's on Vandermark, but is that for all of Vandermark or just?
We, well, we've, we've, we've specified no truck signs for the construction vehicles going up, because sometimes we just get truck drivers that don't pay attention to what roads they should be sticking to, so that's why you put up no trucks on.
How do you get to NAPS, ground?
No, they, they, if they're going to NAPS and it's delivered to them, they can go through that.
Okay.
And may, maybe we, because of that reason, maybe we need to take that sign down, that's causing a problem there.
Maybe it makes sense to truckers, but it didn't mean, uh, how do they get, because we did that on party, so that we didn't have truck traffic there.
Yeah.
But.
Maybe we, we should review that.
There was other ways to get there, there was a tent that I, then they had to take that way.
Yeah, I think our, our intent is for them, was for the construction vehicles on Ninth Street project to avoid that.
Right, that they should be going thirty.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, an older resident asked me on Saturday, how would the trucks get in NAPS? There's no trucks, and I said, I think that's, and I didn't realize it was a temporary sign that it referred to, so. I think that's just, like, we don't want to see a bunch of grain trucks here, all over, and this isn't for through traffic, so.
If, if that's causing a confusion, we'll talk to the neighbors, see if that's a real issue.
It really might be, at this point. Case of your call.
All right, no questions?
Got any questions?
Great to be here tonight, so, got your report, any discussion, any ad points, anything, if anyone has, uh, a question? Otherwise, we'll move to Karen's report, Finance Office?
Nothing to add unless someone has questions for me?
All right, nothing, we'll move to Teresa's report.
I really don't have anything to add either, I just want to point out that as of now, the Municipal League is still holding the, uh, that one-day workshop in September for elected officials, it's good for new ones, um, maybe canceled, they've been canceling a lot of things, but if you're interested in going, either let Karen or myself know before the registration deadline on it, you can look over, I did put in a copy of their agenda, and if you want to get signed up or you can. The BEAC Conference in October has been canceled. Yeah, they went ahead and canceled that, I know the BEAC Street Conference has also been canceled, they canceled pretty much most of their events, so. I think this one keeps going on. We'll see, we'll see, but we'll keep you posted, so. Otherwise, um, um, just what I had in my report, I did get a sample RFI on, on Pierhead just last year, didn't use water treatment, so, um, I haven't dug too far into it, but I looked it over, um, it's kind of, i- it's pretty good, and I think it's, it's not real fast, it's not pages and pages, which is good, I mean, we're kind of keep it fairly simple. And then they also have a good rating sheet that they sent along of how they compared and what they looked at between the different, um, engineering firms, so I'll have something in your next meetings packet for you guys to review on that.
Thank you.
Circle that.
Okay.
Just, uh, I saw the art of sanitation, our yard waste site dumpster numbers, how are those trending? Are those historic, like, on average as they were last year, or are they higher than?
I haven't checked them in the last.
Yeah, I haven't called them, I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
It looks like maybe we're, we're only spending a thousand bucks a month, we're probably well under, true, some of our historical numbers.
I remember twenty thousand dollar numbers before, so.
I know the last time I did when we started it up again this year, I think earlier a few minutes back when we started up, I did compare the numbers, and of course, you have to figure in, you know, the cost of having an employee out there, but we were still running low, but I haven't done the last couple months or so, so, yeah, that's what we can look into.
Thank you, that's all.
Anything else on Teresa's report? All right, we're going to move to old business. I think what we're going to do, having to have it jumped around the schedule tonight, let's just keep jumping around it, we're going to move to the bottom item on old business. Keep everybody on their toes, moving around to HADF, the press for twenty twenty-five, and vision funding.
Greetings, everyone, I'm Keith Matisson, I'm the, uh, co-chair of the Hartford Area Development Foundation. Welcome to two new members. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Development Foundation to request the balance of the funding for the, uh, the vision twenty twenty-five.
And as a, just a note for the record on there, too, we planned this on our last agenda, we were a couple of times a bit short, the session was, we're going to make this decision without, without, at least almost a whole council here, so, um, so here we are again, so.
Yeah, to summarize, how, why we're here again, there is some concern with the COVID, uh, hitting about the same time that first initial ask was, was proposed, that, you know, our numbers may, uh, may not support, uh, contribution of this size, and I'm encouraged to see that we're running a half million dollars strong in our total cash for this year overlapped, overlapped, so. Um, this remaining ask will bring us to our, um, our goal for the year from the city, I guess was a, best way to summarize that.
For the record, as well, the remaining amount, the remaining amount that, from our pledge for the year, what is that dollar going to be?
Hundred and thirty thousand.
One hundred and thirty thousand, yeah.
One eighty total, and fifty of that has been already been paid.
Yep. And that fifty thousand was right in the thick of it, because we were in a, in a Zoom meeting, go-to-meeting at that point, and we weren't sure what sales tax dollars were going to look like, we weren't sure what the resources were going to, we were going to need to be using for other things, so we, we pledged, but then put forward the cash of fifty thousand at that point, saying we would revisit it after this, so.
I made the suggestion to come back at the end of the second quarter, the end of the third quarter, if we'd be to, to, you know, kind of budget those funds out over the course of the, of the year, but this ask, I guess, would bring us right to the the yearly ask, and, and I think this ask is, that we would have asked again in the third quarter. We bled, we pledged eight hundred or more?
Eight hundred over five years.
Eight hundred over five, yeah. It's almost.
I come up with a hundred and sixty. And we do.
One eighty times five, whatever that is.
Yeah, it was a little over eight hundred, yeah. Now you're.
Nine hundred.
Yeah. Eight hundred and eighty, something like that. I've got some numbers in front. Eight hundred.
Oh, dear.
It was eight hundred.
Thousand, I said, I think the minutes reflect eight hundred thousand was our pledge for the year.
It should be one sixty.
That's what's in our vision, twenty twenty-five status report as well, is eight hundred.
Did we have a check for thirty or fifty?
Fifty.
Fifty.
So this one.
That's sixty, so I think it's.
Be one ten.
One sixty, and the balance would be one ten.
Balance be one ten?
Yeah. No.
Eight hundred.
Yeah, that's what the numbers I'll, I'll support, too, is eight hundred thousand over five years.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
That's what I, from our notes, in our budget, eight hundred thousand over five years.
So we, yeah, to put us on track for this year, two hundred and ten thousand.
So I'm, so I'm thinking ahead, is this something that over the next five years, we're going to try to do in one chunk, are we going to try to do it in two, are we going to try to do it in three? I mean, I know we can't forecast what's going to happen, but.
As, as I am planning for the budget to present to you guys, I'm going to plug in this, each year, this hundred and sixty thousand into the budget.
Well, you pay it out however you want, and I'm going to plug it into the budget.
I know that, Teresa, I would just say it from a payment standpoint, is this something, since we, since we did fifty, should we, you know, to cut it into threes, we'd do fifty-five now and fifty-five at the end of the third quarter?
I don't think the HADF cares, but, um, it's something that certainly everybody's time is valuable, Al won't be here necessarily, um, at the end of the third quarter. Keith is a volunteer. It, it, you pay me an hour payment later.
Right, I get it, I get it, I'm just asking the question.
I think, you know, and to that point, and when we get into normal business every year thereafter, that, um, to me, it makes the most sense, you know, we've pledged it.
Right.
And, and our, and our commitment is to make, is to fulfill that pledge, so, whether we, not to have them come back for every installment of that pledge, if we, if we come around next year, a budget time, it's going to be, you know, we're going to, you know, it's going to be ten thousand, you know, twelve thousand a month for, up to that, to that, I don't know that that matters, but I, I feel like either way, it would just make. To me, I prefer just kind of check and have it, have it done, but.
Have you guys done with the money so far?
I'm going to defer that to Al.
Thank you.
Al is not the trader of our group, but the word that he lives on, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with what expenses it looked like to live.
Yeah, thank you, so, um, two million that we expect to raise for this campaign, maybe a little less, maybe a little more, is expected to be the amount that is in play to manage the Envision Twenty Twenty Five program. There have been some pre nut expenses, if you will, for the campaign itself, which the city council and the foundation agreed. Excuse my uniform, I'm the only person over fifty-five in the room.
I'm the.
No, you're not.
Just disappointed about.
So, there were some, some, yeah, expenses, um, and the foundation and the council can determine how they want to allocate that, but, um, the intent is too main for, for the program, and that pro, the program decisions is how to proceed with the available dollars, which are in part subject to how the funds are collected over the five years, because some choose to pay early in the year, others choose to pay later, pledge later in the year. some choose to pay early in the year, others choose to pay later, pledge later in the year. That is contingent upon decisions by an investor council, which will be, um, smog and people representing the public sector, but also the private sector, will be making action decisions as to how to proceed with the five-year mandate, if you will, and how much to spend in achieving the goals of the five-year mandate. That is your question. Thank you.
So their ask?
No.
One ten?
One ten?
Yeah, the balance. I'll make a motion that we pay our remaining pledge for two thousand twenty and one hundred and ten thousand to HADF twenty twenty-five in vision.
Second.
Got a motion on second? Discussion.
Would you just take that out of the general fund, Teresa? Tell you anything hiding around the corner that would, uh, make us regret this, that you know of?
It's hiding, I don't know, I miss.
Is there, is there, is there any reason you can think of why this would be a bad decision at this time?
No, um, like I said, you know, we had our concerns with COVID, but, you know, I think, I think our sales tax dollars are holding up, and with the CARES Act, the, the grant that's out there that we can get reimbursement for, a lot of our expenses is, you know, put us, you know, okay, so I think, I, I don't hope anything, I guess.
Cause if it goes bad, I'm gonna.
Of course.
Yeah, what credit came when I say, I'm gonna.
Oh, it?
Yeah.
All right, with that, we'll vote.
Randall?
Yes.
Oh, Eric?
I understand.
Yep.
Kim?
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Brendan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
And my, yeah.
Are you kidding me? You called on me last night to kill this thing?
I'm impressed.
Yeah.
All right, well, we appreciate the update, especially at the last meeting, um, and we guys had, uh, great partners so far, and just great support from the community, proud of the work you're doing, and, uh, appreciate it.
Give Al a lot of credit, I have to type on to, uh, just the anger of all of the, the calls with him, but the reception within the community area has just been outstanding. You, uh, you try to predict what an ask could be for, for a certain business, and sometimes they, they exceed that. Real, real pleasant to be part of that, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, especially during this whole COVID thing, and, you know, shutdowns and everything, and I think this is really a, a true example of leadership, you know, taking the step and keeping it moving forward during these difficult times. Thank you very much.
I agree, I appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you.
And I am all. Oh, Mark, Mark, one other comment is, uh, Travis is my co-chair, so he, like, my last meeting, last meeting, you guys were here, so we had a kind of table, but Mark is also on the, uh, the board, so.
Well, I got that figured out. I'm just kinda surprised they, we meet at last. If they'd called on me first, then Mark and Travis would've known, other than they had a vote.
Mark isn't on the board, he comes to a lot of meetings, and he's been involved in a lot of asks.
He's been very involved in the campaign. He comes to a lot of meetings, I thought he was on the board.
Very vocal.
Really taken, I didn't feel like that I asked those right last, last meeting, about the, right, the board meeting here.
It's a big, it's a big.
It's a big ask, it's a big, certainly could've been seen as a conflict, adventurous, cause I would've added a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. Thanks for coming back again. Let's get this thing wrapped up anyway, September first.
Giving it our best shot.
There's a bottom down out there, taking it like, gauge presentation, but a lot of pleasant things coming our way, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, without further ado, we've got the oath of office, Mr. Mark Brennman. Got a flag out just for you tonight?
Are you standing here? You gonna read this?
Yeah, he can read right now.
Good.
Stand by, ready, please, yes.
Very reasonable, very, very, hi.
Yes.
Hi, Eric. I am Mark Brennman, having been elected unopposed to the office of council person, Board One, within and for the city town of Hartford, and said county and state, he is always aware that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of South Dakota, and ordinance of several city towns and parks, and I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, perform all the duties of my said office, council person, Board One.
There you go.
I like our numbers working.
All right, so we're gonna move to other old business, we've got, again, we had the kind of short group last time, so we moved these to this meeting, the election of council president, and the election of council vice president. So, with this, we can talk about that a little bit last time, take nominations, and, um, take nominations for president first. See how that goes, we vote, then, um, anybody can cease nominations at any time they want to, as long as you have a motion and a second for that. And we'll move on to vice president, and I'll get that first, sort of, right? Open it up for nominations.
I nominate Bert Jones for council president.
A second. We'll move to start nominations.
Just a second. And I don't recall, do you need any votes on, on the nominations cease or any of that?
Yeah, you need a vote on.
Vote all the way across?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So the votes, uh, nominations cease.
We're gonna vote on that first, and then.
And then the motion.
Obviously, with the.
I wanna make sure I'm clear on that, nominations do not need a vote, but the motion to cease nominations does.
We're voting on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think technically it's a cast unanimous.
You can, uh, say you can phrase it that way, to cease nominations and cast unanimously.
Then we just do one, sure.
Yeah, then you don't really need one, if you wanna phrase it that way.
That's what I said.
Cast unanimously, then we only need one vote, yes.
Couldn't you hear me over there?
Yeah.
I said all the way over here on the other, this white plastic, hey, hit his knee, hit his knee on. We gotta get this thing on some cement blocks or something, cause there's a grown man sitting down here.
I still second that.
Hundred and thirty.
All right, we got a motion to the second.
Sitting on a plastic.
Four, ceasing nominations and casting unanimous vote. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
I sued unopposed. Any opposed or standing?
Okay. I'd make a motion to nominate Travis Keel for council vice president.
Second.
Second?
Make a motion, we cease nominations and all cast the unanimous vote.
Second. That's about all of my memory. One or two minutes I pulled.
All right, with that motion?
Don't put that in paper. Don't make me, don't make me tell your dad.
All right, who voted on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or standing? All right. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
With that said, I'm tickled you're here to shut, sign checks today.
Yeah, I don't, so, so far. So far. All right, we're gonna move down to new business, and we've got a marketing video. Hello, everyone, this is Gabe Steinhardt, Director of Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, Director of the Foundation, uh, so I wanted to present a potential, uh, video project to get some more promotional material for Hartford, so we can market it out to the area, and also gain some cool new footage for our website, social media accounts, uh, so we can properly display the modern vision of Hartford, um, in the example video that lists here, did everyone have a chance to look at that, or is there a need for us to pull that up? I provided a link, so I hope everyone can look that up. Okay, um, basically, a little background on that is that, um, Pinnacle, PIN Studios out of Sioux Falls was here earlier this summer, uh, with World X for a web conference that they hosted out in Brewery, they filmed a nice little intro video about downtown of Hartford area, a lot of visual foot, a lot of aerial visual footage, really displaying our town in a great positive light, um, I talked about that footage, it's a lot, it's without sound right now, so we could add sound to it, whatever we wanted, um, they commented that at the moment that product, that video would be about three hundred dollars, however, they'd be interested in coming back and working with us, they captured more film that encompasses more of the community, so we could get some footage of the golf course, of Western Meadows, of the school, of, uh, of our shopping plaza, of the sports complex, and there is a town that we wanna show off more, uh, and then also get more footage of specific businesses, um, an example would be walking in and seeing the shop owners standing there smiling, just inviting you into the store, um, so really being able to showcase who we are, and our positive atmosphere, what we have going on, um, for that, they estimated it would be between another five and eight hundred dollars, um, to complete that project, and maybe willing to work with us on that, uh, so I wanted to bring that to you, to see about funding that project, since it would be really for true community, positive moment, like, really showcasing the community as a whole and benefiting, not just one organization.
Have you talked to the Chamber of Congress about this?
I have not talked to the Chamber of Commerce about this, um, they don't specifically have a budget category for this area, they are gonna be doing some more specific business videos for Discover Hartford series, um, but those have a different kind of spin and focus, uh, so I understand that there's some similarity to the previous Discover Hartford series, but the new one that they're going to be showcasing is gonna be more business-focused in like thirty-second videos, um, and this is kind of a different, this is more broad community feel instead of chamber-specific.
When the chamber asked for the gap money? Is that where you were going? That's exactly where I was going, when I looked at this, that's what I was going with, I wonder what they spent out of that gap money?
They only used the thirty-five hundred that they had asked for for Discover Hartford, the rest has been sitting there in anticipation of not knowing what we were making next year for the carnival, and has been recommended to sit there at the moment.
When Gabe showed me this, I thought this may be something we can utilize on our website as well, it should perk up our website, you, I don't know if you've ever seen Dell Rapids, but they have an aerial, when you go on to it, it's pretty kind of cool, so.
We're still wrapping up.
I wondered if the chamber would be interested in funding this out of their chamber money, maybe, do you think? Is that too much to?
You know, I think, but, but when you say that, Gabe, I think that that is a comment from a council member, if I remember correctly, that they may wanna hang on to some of that carnival next year, correct? Yes, that, that was the recommendation.
It's my comment.
That was the recommendation from the council to the chamber that they not spend that money, because they weren't sure what the bus route looked like, but in the next year, they were gonna see their full allocation, so.
And, oh, I, yeah.
I think it's good, I did find the website for Dell Rapids, it's strange news, right on top.
Yeah. Right now, we just have pictures on our top banner, but that would be.
If we can get Turtle Creek to look like the Big Sioux, but.
Either if they capture it with a really big green, you never know.
No small group.
We'll fly it really close to the water surface. Like you're. I think there is, I think there's some room out there for some space out there, be thinking a little bit about Hartford promotion outside of Hartford, chamber business promotion, and outside of Hartford, HADF promotion, to be honest, I think as we come in budget time this year, it would be a good idea for us to consider not only things like this, but, but what does our branding look like? Is it time for a new logo? Is it time for, for some of those things to really just, to really set our brand, our impression up a little bit, so, um, I don't, I don't think this is a bad step into that, you know? And, and we can, we can put some of those things on the chamber, HADF, but I, I understand why sometimes those things don't fit their mission, it's, it's, it's a little broader than that. Well, we do have a number of businesses in town that are not chamber members, so this would definitely be an opportunity for us to reach out to them and incorporate them to really promote it, we do have, it really serves in our entire business sector, not just chamber members, but chamber members on the board, and we encourage all businesses to join the chamber.
We do have a thousand dollars budget out of our third PIN for promotions, and we usually budget it every year, just so in case something like this comes up, I mean, so, we do have funds budgeted this year.
That promotion would be about all thousand dollars to promotion. Specifically whatever.
What are you looking for, eight hundred bucks here? Uh, it could be up to, it could be up to eight hundred plus three, it may give you a six, like a definitive, whether it was three hundred plus the eight, or whether it be three hundred plus the five for a total of eight, but it should, I mean, that thousand mark should be.
Should I keep the thousand dollars budgeted for promotion to the Hartford, maybe, profit faster?
Second. Motion on second, yes, session? Any none?
I'll go to your last, Mark. What do you wanna do, boss?
My name.
Sure.
Yes.
Brennman.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Oh, Eric, yes. And Randall.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. I like that, Gabe, that video is good, to get that now up, that's really nice.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try to start it off with a spin.
Yeah, good, yeah. Have the drone fly around you a couple of times.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If you let us know when that's gonna happen, we'll make sure we got some vehicles strategically placed downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll stage it as much as needed. All right, we're gonna move on, we had set our budget meeting for the twenty twenty-one budget, and with, uh, looking at August sometime, usually, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we usually look at kind of like the last week, because that's when I can get numbers from the counties, far as, you know, from then, and what we can get for tax revenues, so, I had thrown out there the Monday twenty-fourth or Wednesday twenty-sixth, I know Levon says she has a conflict with Monday, so maybe we can look at the twenty-sixth, if that could work for people?
Sounds good.
Be better than me.
Wednesday the twenty-sixth?
Wednesday the twenty-sixth?
What time?
Um, we can do it, six, seven?
Yeah.
Seven?
That works, which for me, sometimes budget meetings, once in a while, we'll move them up to six, in case they get to be lengthy, but, uh, I don't know if anybody has a preference for six or seven?
Uh, six might be a stretch for me.
I think the last couple of years, we've tried to do seven for Mark, and I think they've been okay, you know, it's worked okay.
Yeah, but that will work as long as it's seven. Yeah, and that will work as long as it's at seven, should.
Make a motion on.
Make a motion to set the budget meeting for August twenty-sixth at seventeen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we jumped around the agenda, did we miss anything?
I think so.
I think we did. Okay, thanks all for a motion to move to executive session for Woodville and personnel.
So move.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, any opposed?
On my deck. Serious?
I need, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.